This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, we are live. Okay. I'm going to call into order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for January 18th at about 6 o'clock. And if we could start the meeting by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So we are live on East Hampton media tonight. Thanks, everybody, for sort of going with the flow. We had a little bit of a snow incident on Tuesday, which made it not likely for us to show up. And we ended up canceling the meeting and rescheduling for tonight. So with that, we'll see how we can get through the agenda, but hopefully we can. So this is essentially the same agenda that we had for Tuesday. We just moved it over. So do we have any open time for the public?
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I am Chairperson of the Alminers, and I wish to publicly thank the dozens of residents who have made generous contributions, any amount has been generous, to the Alminers Fund. The Alminers Fund is one that was created more than 100 years ago by three people in town who donated money. We never, and they were in their wills, we never touched the principal. We only spend the interest or donations, and we are able to help residents in need. And we appreciate that the donations have helped to increase the amounts of money because we have needed to assist residents in 2023. We're still able to collect donations if anybody wishes to. There was a stuffer in the tax bill. And all you do is send a check, attention, Alminers Fund, 210 College Highway, Suite 7, Southampton, 01073. And if you have any questions, there is an email, alminers@townofsouthampton.org. Thank you.
And the check is made out to?
Alminers Fund. Thank you. Make the check to Alminers Fund.
So it's not the town of Southampton?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do a 360. And did you want to mention an event coming up this weekend? Or is it next week?
No, I will take care of that. If you're talking about the one for the Southampton Historical Society?
No, no, for winter seed sowing.
Oh, no, actually not. This was just for tonight. This is all for tonight, the Alminers.
Thanks, Stephen. Anyway, so the check is made out to the Alminers?
Turn and give you a free?
Free press, right?
Believe me, I take every opportunity to speak.
So it's made out to the Alminers Fund, not the town of Southampton?
That is correct. Alminers Fund.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Yeah, Lucy?
Hi, Lucy Dollington, Clerk, 10 Strong Road. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to let everyone know that the census for 2024 are going out. We sent out Precinct 1 today, five buckets to the post office, not buckets, but trays, sorry. They said that they were going to stay in town, so they weren't going to go to Hartford. Hopefully, they don't. Sometimes they go to Hartford and then they come back here, but hopefully they'll just stay in town and people get them over the weekend. And also, registered voters are getting the vote-by-mail application cards in the mail. I believe Boston is sending out Precinct 1 first and then Precinct 2. Registered voters should be getting them. They sent them out last week. If anybody has any questions, let us know. Just call our office, 413-527-8392, or you could email me, townclerk@townofsouthampton.org. And if you have any questions about the census, same thing, so.
Is there a deadline for returning the census?
Well, as soon as possible would be nice. There's, you know, I have five inserts in there. So the dog licensing forms are in there, and there's a library card registration form in there, senior center volunteer form in there. There's an election calendar in there with the elected offices that are open coming up in May. We do have some open seats that are going to be opening up for appointments. Zoning Board is one of them. So that's an appointed board, and all of those seats are up this year except for one. So, but, all right.
And the first election is the primary?
The first election is the March 5th primary. Yep. And that is in, over here.
And are we doing any early voting?
Yep, we are doing early voting, February 24th through March 1st. And on that election calendar, I put in the census, it has all of the elections through the year, starting with February 24th as the first early voting day, and going all the way until November 5th. It has all the early voting dates. It has the local election. It has the town meeting dates. So, yep.
So it'll be early voting and mailing?
Early voting in person and?
Everything, yeah.
Yep. All right.
Good, good to know. Thank you for that.
Okay, so just to let you know.
Thank you.
Good, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Ed.
I'm the stand-in for Tammy Lunas, the Southampton Historical Society President this evening, since Tammy was not able to be here since the meeting was postponed from Tuesday night. And she wanted to remind folks that the Historical Society has a free program meeting next Thursday, January 25th, at 7:00 PM in the Southampton Congregational Church. All are welcome to this free family event, and the topic will be on the 1944 Circus Fire. They have had many people ask them about the subject and feel that they could do a very nice presentation with the materials they have available at the Clark Chapman House.
Great. Okay. Yeah, the Circus Fire, I believe, was in Hartford, actually, but it involves some town residents. Good. All right. So I think that's all we have for announcements at the moment. Very good. Okay, we will keep on going. We don't have any public hearings tonight and no other presentations. And we were to have reports to the Select Board from the Norris School and the Hampshire Regional School Principal and the school superintendent. Because of our changing of date, they were not able to come tonight. We have written reports from the two principals, at least. So Select Board, I think what we will end up doing is rescheduling them probably for our next meeting on the 30th. And hopefully they can work that into their schedules and be here in person to go through those reports. But in the meantime, you do have the narrative reports, so read through them. And if you've got questions, just get some questions ready for them. But yeah, unfortunately, timing didn't work out for everybody when we had to postpone this. So that's the way it goes. Okay. All right. And we will still be looking, and I'll work with Ed and the Finance Committee on this, but we wanted to have another meeting, too, with Finance Committee and the Southampton members, I think, of the Hampshire Regional School Committee, just to talk a little bit about budget and those kinds of things. So we'll schedule that one as well. All right. So that will jump us down into reports to the Select Board. So let's go with Ed and the Town Administrator Report, please.
Sure. It has been brought to our attention that none of the ADA-equipped bathrooms in Town Hall have automatic door openers installed on them. To rectify this, one of the capital requests for Town Hall for fiscal year 2025 will be to install three automatic door openers on the three first-floor restrooms. And also, being on that topic, we did receive a grant to do an ADA survey on some of our town buildings, which I will actually make sure is in place before I leave. So, and it's, all of our buildings are eligible, Norris School, the Town Hall, the library, the Highway Department, you know, the Water Department Office on Be squat Road.
So it's looking at accessibility issues?
Yeah, to see what may exist for accessibility issues. And they do put out grants every year for ADA accessibility, but the first step is the community has to do a plan of their facilities. So this is the first step in that direction. So we'll be eligible in the future to apply for that grant. The Select Board will need to delegate signator for the EMPG grant the town was just awarded. As I will not be here when the project is completed and the reimbursement paperwork has to be filed, I would recommend either Bradley Oxon or Richard Fazoli for this responsibility. The EMPG grant is usually, is done by the Emergency Management Director, which I am the interim right now. We get about $2,700 or $2,705 each year. We have purchased emergency lighting equipment in the past. We have purchased equipment for accident extrication in the past. This year, Interim Chief Fazoli put in, and we were granted an award to purchase, I'm going to call them fire blankets, but EV vehicles, once the batteries catch on fire. You can't really put them out, so these blankets actually snuff that fire. In addition to the blankets, they're purchasing some chains so that if that EV vehicle catches on fire in someone's garage, they can actually throw the blankets on it and drag it out of the garage to at least get it out of the building. So part of the, they're doing the, shall we say, the grant contract differently this year. So if the Select Board would choose a designee this evening, I will let MEMA know who that signator designee is so that they can send them the DocuSign paperwork to sign.
Is this one of the grants that we have to do? Is it reimbursable, or we get the money upfront?
No, this is reimbursable.
I think either.
So are you looking for a motion?
Make a motion, sure.
Oh, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we delegate Richard Fazoli, the signator for the EMPG grant award.
Okay. Motion by Dan, second by Stephen. Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes.
Okay. I will take care of getting that information back to MEMA, and then they will send that DocuSign paperwork to Interim Chief Fazoli for his signature. Just to let you know, Judy Zedonis has sent out the request and templates for the town 2023 annual town reports to all the departments and committees. With some new housing being constructed on East Street, the Water Department is in negotiations with the builder to add 650 feet of water main as an expansion to our water service on East Street, with the builder picking up the cost of the materials to do that. And shortly, the library will be changing their Saturday hours from the existing 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM to the new hours of 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM. The Health and Building Departments will be in court on Monday, January 22nd, in regards to the mortgage company who owns Eight Cold Spring, as they have not been responsive to the health, building, and safety notifications which have been sent to them on that property. As Lucy said earlier, the Town Clerk's Office has started to mail out census forms for this year. The Harper's payroll integration is proceeding with a few bumps in the road. Payrolls have been processed, but a few direct deposit informations did not get converted, so they're looking into that. This is the second payroll that has been processed with Harper's now. And with the next payroll, other than those employees who still receive a physical check, all those other employees that are on direct deposit will be utilizing the employee payroll portal to view their payroll stubs. The police chief has reported that the dispatch conversion going to the city of East Hampton has gone well. The radio connectivity for the police department has actually improved since the dispatch has been transferred over to East Hampton. However, there are still some spotty areas in town which are problematic for radio transmissions due to the placement of the fire repeater at the Highway Garage and former road. The police chief and interim fire chief are working towards having that repeater tower move to Mount Tom for improved radio communications. Let's see. The police department has one opening for a full-time police officer, but has several applicants who they will be interviewing. And then the state election primary will be held on March 5th, 2024. And then upcoming meetings, Select Board meetings, January 23rd and 30th, and Select Board meetings for February to be determined.
Why don't we just do February's right now? Should be hopefully easy enough. We have January 23rd as the joint meeting, and then the 30th, and that would put us on schedule for the February 13th and February 27, I believe. We may or may not need an executive meeting somewhere in between, so keep that in your minds. But right now, 13 and 27, okay? All right. Ed, I'm just going to, PS here. For our executive session, at least John and probably Joy, they don't have the link. The email was blank with no link. So if you could check that out. There's no link in the email. So, anyway, so.
It will be back.
Yeah, if you just forward them a link.
It will be back sometime.
Yeah, it may have just not gotten forwarded. So let's us continue with our Select Board reports. How about Dan, committee meetings that you've had over the last few days?
No, none to report.
Oh, dear. Really? Quiet meetings? No meetings, though?
Yeah, you've been having them all.
Uh huh. Okay. Stephen, anything?
Planning Board just posted for the joint meeting on the.
Okay.
Now, I'll say the wrong date.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
23rd, yep.
And is otherwise meeting as scheduled in February. Conservation Commission had technical problems or scheduling problem with Zoom at the January meeting, and they've rolled the whole thing forward to February 8. And then they'll meet every other month going forward with most of the summer off.
That's unusual.
I get this from reading the meeting schedule. So I have yet to actually participate in a meeting.
Okay. Maybe they haven't posted, though. I mean, they wouldn't post that far out for the summer. I mean, normally, anyway.
No, it's for commission members and alternates to have a calendar for the year, especially since it comes up infrequently. Okay. And then Board Health.
Just to meet the requests for new buildings and such.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's a lot of requests that would come in for them to handle. I would think they'd have to meet more frequently. I mean, the conservation agent is only part-time, right? And in the office, only a few hours, few days a week, right? So.
Representative who was scheduled to be heard in January is questioning whether something could be worked out sooner than February.
Okay. I'm not sure about that. Open meetings still have to happen. If they have a Zoom link that isn't working, they need to be checking in that day with Ed or Judy to test it and be sure it's working, if they haven't.
The source of the problem is known, but avoidable.
Okay. Because sometimes that's been a problem, where it asks you for a code or something, and then it's a problematic thing.
It may be possible to accommodate more than one committee at the same time.
There's two separate Zooms. So Judy sends one, Ed has one. So depending on if there was a conflict or something, that might have happened.
Very likely.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's keep an ear on the.
And finally, the Board Health, I promise to do better. And they are looking forward to a meeting in February on the 27th at 5:00 in preparation for meeting with the Select Board that evening.
Working on their budget, probably, or something, too?
Probably. But the headline was for cannabis and opioid settlement fund ideas.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
That's all I've got.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, let's, you know, keep us abreast on that.
Nothing from the assessors.
Yeah, okay. All right. So from my end, a couple things. Let's see. Master Plan has scheduled a meeting for the 25th, I believe, and we just have to do a changeover of room, which I will post shortly. I forgot. Lucy, thank you for reminding me. We've got a double booking in one of the rooms here, so we'll change that out. But the Master Plan Committee will meet, I believe it's on the 25th. The Grant Committee is actually meeting tomorrow Friday morning at 11:00, meeting with the Greenway Committee in particular to go over the next Mass Trails grant application, which is due February 1st. So Mass, the Greenway Committee is going to be looking for additional funds to complete out the design work that we need to do. It'll be less money than we've requested in the past, just to finish out that full design work for DOT. So that will be coming in, and hopefully, they've done a good job doing a lot of the drafting already. So that shouldn't be too heavy a lift to get in by the deadline. The biggest one we've got, and this is just starting, is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And this is going to be one that former Chief Russ Anderson is managing to take the lead on. We've engaged him to take the lead on dealing with this. It's a federal grant, and it's going to be, certainly, one of the proportions is asking for a tanker, and the other one is for the SCBA bottles system that the firefighters use, oxygen system that they use. And so altogether, I think the tanker alone is some $600,000 and probably a couple hundred thousand dollars on the other one. So the chief has taken the lead in doing some initial drafting on that. The actual call for applications hasn't really opened yet. I think it opens on the 29th or 30th of this month, and it's actually not due until about March 5th, I think. So there's a whole month to work on that. So even though the chief is working on that, the Grant Committee will join in and help wherever we need to in terms of any of the town information or whatever he may need to fill in the blanks on certain questions. So that'll be probably a pretty heavy lift, but the technical side of it is something that he's managing, thank goodness. And so that will be in the works, and hopefully we will have some success with that one.
Did you mention the ratio of grant to community investment?
I didn't. There will be a small match. Actually, it's pretty small. I think the $600,000 one for the tanker, I'm thinking it was around $30,000 is what I remember seeing on there. So it's a pretty small match for the town for a change, which is nice. Oftentimes, we have to do a full 25% match or something, which can be a heavy lift sometimes there, too. Let's see, what else we got going? The Ad-Hoc Cost efficiencies Committee has not met in a while. That's been on my shoulders just because I've run out of scheduling time and meeting times. But we will get back on track with that. Hopefully, get a meeting before the end of this month, if we possibly can. And then I think the biggest thing is on the 23rd, so next Tuesday, we'd already informed people that we're going to have a joint meeting, in the sense that we've invited other committees to join us, from school committee to parks to planning to open space to housing. I think that's everybody. Public, yeah, of course. Public Safety and Senior Center Building Committees, both, to sit down and talk a little bit about land issues and land availability in town. We have the possibility of perhaps acquiring a large parcel of land. And over the year, as committees come to us and talk about some of their issues, land has certainly been a request and an issue. So we have an opportunity, maybe, on the horizon, that we would like to have discussed with various members of the committee. So it may or may not be the full committees coming, but at least a couple representatives hopefully can show up and be part of that discussion so that we can talk about that in more detail and see if there's a desire to really move forward on that. Because if so, we would want to get things in play in time for town meeting in May and to, Brian, bring that notion before the residents in May, if we possibly can. So that's probably the next biggest thing on the agenda here. Okay?
Thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I think we need to at least put all the heads together that have said, hey, we need more land for playing fields at the parks or affordable housing or whatever. So this is maybe our one and only chance, certainly in my last five years that's come forward. We just don't have a whole lot of extra space in town for those kinds of initiatives. So the more we can. Thank you, Ed. All squared away.
Hopefully, I did it right this time.
All right, good. All right.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Well, I'm glad they let us know. Hopefully. Okay. So with that, we just got through all of our reports, so you're actually in good timing. I think the next thing up under New Business is the FERCOG Collective Highway Bids. And so, FERCOG is our Franklin Regional Council of Governments program, of which we are a member. So Ed, why don't you take us through that a little bit and tell us what we need to do here?
Yes. And we have used their collective procurement. I think this is, I think it's the fourth year now. So we utilize it. It does cost the town and the Highway Department $3,500 to utilize it. It's an annual fee. But we utilize it for such things as gravel when we grade the roads. We utilize it when we are crack sealing the roads. We utilize it to repair roads and either doing a blue chip process or an overlayment or a mill and overlayment. There are a number of different products that we utilize off this of different-sized stone for, you know, drainage work to, shall we say, shore up embankments for drainage to lessen erosion. So rather than doing each and every one of the bids on our own, it is a good way to go. You know, we do get a, shall we say, a better price by them doing it for a number of communities. They put it out to bid. They get, and the community can pick and choose which ones it wants to participate in. And I will say, we, I'm going to use the collective "we" here. Randall Kemp, the Highway Superintendent, would give them the estimated amounts. They would put that in. FERCOG does the bidding, gets the bids back, awards them, sends the stuff out, sends the awards out to the individual communities that asked for that particular bid so that they can utilize them. So two things, permission to do it again, and then I would ask that this year, in the past years, I have been the signatory on this, I'm actually going to ask the Select Board if you would basically approve, give the Chair the authorization to sign the document for us to participate in the program. That has to be done by the Select Board in a town. And then I'm going to ask if you would please designate Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, as the signatory on this for fiscal, the fiscal year.
So do both Select Board and Randall, together?
Well, it's, yeah. Basically, the Select Board has to vote to allow us to participate in the program.
It's renewal, correct?
We use it each year. We have for this, I think it'll be our fifth year.
If you're ready, I move that we authorize the Chair, the Board of the Select Board, to enter into an annual contract with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments Collective Highway Bid Program with an annual fee of $3,500. The Chair to sign the agreement and the Roads.
Highway Superintendent.
Highway Superintendent Randall Kemp to authorize individual expenditures under this program.
Okay. Hopefully, that, that's a long motion, but I think, well-stated. Okay, Stephen motion? Dan, second. Okay. All right. Any questions, discussion? It certainly sounds like it's a program that would pay for itself or has paid for itself.
It's paid for itself many. It's paid for itself many times over.
In terms of the workload alone. So, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion passes. Thank you. Great. Uh, Harper's Payroll Integration, you talked a little bit about it. Do you have any other comments about that at all?
What's that?
The Harper's Payroll Integration.
Like I say, it's, overall, it's gone well. There's, you know, as with any conversion, there's going to be a few bumps in, in the road, which we have, uh, found in the first couple of weeks. Nothing insurmountable, uh, as far as that goes. I think, I think it's going to prove, prove out that, you know, other than maybe for a few more weeks, finding a little, some little glitches in it, maybe taking a little longer than it, uh, will eventually after everyone's used to using the programs and, and everything, I think it's definitely a move in the right direction, you know, for, for, for all of us. So, I mean, I'm, I'm personally glad we made it. I know it's, uh, shall we ben, say, extra work, mostly for the Treasurer Collector's Office, some to the Town Accountant's Office, uh, too, but.
Thirty seconds to amplify that. Thank you, Ed. That's, that's a great summary. I sign the warrant every other week, including this particular one for payroll. So now I've seen the two cycles that Ed referred to with payroll service. And I'll tell you that the reports that are provided, um, provide incredible statistical background from a human resources perspective. So I was quite impressed with that, perhaps more than we were looking for. But to Ed's point, even the day after New Year's holiday and a snow day in the second instance, uh, the temperature in the office was just fine.
Yeah, that's, thinking, thinking back, it's, uh, you know, we never thought about, yes, we implemented it for January 1st and the very first two payrolls. The first payroll was basically a Monday holiday of, uh, New Year's Day, and the second one was a Monday holiday or Martin Luther King Day. So it shortened up that, that, you know, the timeframe that they, uh, everyone had to work with and get it done with, so.
So kudos to staff as well as to the service.
Absolutely. I tip my cap to, uh, the staff for doing such a good job with those first two payrolls.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, I don't know if we have any updates on the electrical inspection fees? That was a.
I do not.
A request to change the, um, the fee for the electrical inspections, obviously, and to that would, um, we had a couple of questions, I think, for the electrical inspector, so.
Yeah, I've got, I've got to work with Jim Fisher and put that into a, an Excel format.
That we were, um, open to hearing the proposal, we just didn't hear enough detail.
Right, I think we just have to have a little bit more detail, but otherwise, I think we were fine on that. Yep, okay. Uh, right, Dispatch Regional MOU update. I see our perfect timing, chief. Our chief of police.
And I, I had sent out, uh, East Hampton's response to our requests, uh, on that to, uh, the Select Board members. And if you'd like, I can put that document since, if I printed it, it would be black and white and be, be hard to see their, uh, new redlined, uh, version of it. If you want me to, I can actually put the document up on the big screen so you can see it in its color version if you want to go, would like to go over it.
And we had it in our packet, I believe, in color.
Uh, it's.
Not, no, I'm not.
No, not in color.
Yeah.
Not, not, online.
Online, yes.
So my recollection is that we delegated authority to Chief and Town Administrator or the Chief and Interim Chief.
Yeah, and, and if you'd like, uh, yeah, you can, and Ian can give us some of that, uh, a, a, an update on that. And if you would like us to, um, the Chief, Chris and myself can get, get back together and go over any detail if, if that's what the Select Board would wish.
Right, what did, what did happen?
I think we're at 98%, and so if you want to take credit for the final 2%, that's fine.
We'll see. Are we, you know, we had had a long meeting, the Chief, Ed and I, to go through and really mark it up pretty well, and so this is the, the feedback back from them. So maybe you could just summarize it. I don't think we need to put it on the screen, but.
Sure.
Just summarize kind of the high points or, or points that maybe they've accepted and, you know, and things that are still kind of in contention that we have to.
So I reviewed, I compared the redlined version, Ian Ellingsworth Police Chief. I reviewed the redlined version from, response from East Hampton compared to what was submitted by the Board. And I didn't see anything, Ed, I don't know if you had an opportunity as well to review it, but I didn't see anything that was, uh, an impediment to, to, um, even our, with, with, to, to go forward. Um, there's, there was nothing significant. They added certain things, but nothing that I found to be, um, outside the parameters of reasonableness. Probably the only, uh, major, one of the things that I, I should note on this is I reached out to Chief Alberti today and asked about the actual, um, annual assessment. And their annual assessment, he said, is $200,000. That's what they, that's what they're asking.
That's still what they want from us.
That's what they want for us for year, $200,000. That was what I asked him because I think it's important that at some point we, we, we have to recognize that, that development grant, I think, is due by March 1st, which means the grant process. So the City of East Hampton's Dispatch Center has to be established as a, a REC, a Regional Emergency Communication Center. Once they're, they are, um, recognized as a REC, then they can apply for that grant, and it's due by March 1st. So that, we have a certain timeframe that we have to make sure that we, we get this done. The one part of this that I think, uh, should be noted is in that redlined version that the, uh, East Hampton, City of East Hampton gave us, there's a part in the financial safeguards, it's, uh, Section 12, 3. I'm sorry, 2. And it says specifically, what is the metric on the second term, meaning at post three years, as to establishing the extension of the agreement and, and as far as the assessment? And there was nothing there. There was no metric based on their city council when they, their, their city council, when they returned this. So I reached out to Chief Alberti relative to that, and he said, you know, in agreement with me, that it should just be in terms of negotiation because we're actually going to have to renegotiate this contract anyway. So if we, if the, the Select Board wanted to put into that section, the metric should be subject to negotiation, uh, Chief Alberti is, is good with that.
And the section is what again?
Um, it's Section 12, Financial Standards, Safeguards, rather. And it's in the second paragraph.
So that Southampton agrees to pay a minimum part is still in there? Or no, that's not.
It's what they, so where they crossed out. So if you look down in, in subsection B of that paragraph, and it says, what is the metric on the second term? The metric would be, um, subject to negotiation, something along those lines, versus a specific, um, metric that, that. So it would be difficult to come up with in a three-year time span.
Yeah, Stephen?
So this is a three-year contract.
It's a three-year contract.
Well, actually, it's a three-year contract with a right, right to renew.
Right to renew, right.
One, three years.
Right. Terminates in, in three years with the right to renew, correct?
So that's contract. The contacts, the state grant program that would provide a lot of reimbursement or grant funding to the host city, but not to the sponsored community.
So the benefits that the town of Southampton would get would, through that development grant that, um, they would apply for, the first three years, the, the State 911 Department would pay for our assessment fee. So if the Board were, whatever the Board agreed to and the City of East Hampton agrees to, whether it's $200,000 or not, the State 911 Department, through that grant, would pay for that. And then year four, it's, I believe, uh, 50%, provided that, you know, continues. Year five is 25% and year six.
It's all on us.
It's all on us.
Right.
If the grant were not approved and.
The grant were not approved, then we're.
Flying on our own.
We were required to, according to this contract.
$200,000?
Or $200,000.
Interesting. Yeah, I mean, it says here, if it's not received, East Hampton may terminate it, but our, their obligations shall be in effect for a year, and Southampton's responsible for paying, paying it no matter what.
Yeah.
Interesting. And the, the $200,000 is, this is the second time we've heard this, so this is not.
I, I asked, it's not necess, I'm not, you know, nothing's been negotiated between the town and, and the city. I, because this was left.
Yeah.
With, with no assessment, I reached out to him so the Board would have an idea of what it is, and he explained, it's $200,000.
That's what they have asked, that's what they have asked for. So I will, I will ask you, when you go back to your office tomorrow, would you please let me know if you're available either on Monday or Tuesday for about an hour or so, you and I can go and go through the last couple of years of what all of the telecommunications actual costs have been and what it looks like they will be going forward. And to me, that is also going to, uh, include any telecommunication costs that have now been transferred to the Police Department under that impact bargaining.
Sure.
Because I want, I want to, I would like to compare what going forward our actual costs may be, including whether it's $200,000 or $150,000 to what the past costs have been for the last couple of years.
And the, the only other thing that we want to just consider is that the, the other grants that are out there as far as equipment upgrades would.
Benefit us.
Would benefit us as far as radios and, and, and stuff like that, new upgrades.
Right, so any upgrades, it's not just for East Hampton, but it's for us as well.
Yes, yes, that would be.
And so with, with all this happening, then any grant possibility, these couple grants, that we, we couldn't apply if we wanted to, right? We, we're no longer.
No, we're, we're no longer eligible.
Able to apply.
Yes.
Well, and I think, you know, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, this $200,000 magic figure, if, if somehow they, they knew what our general budget item was for dispatch and they just kind of used that, or if that's.
I know, uh, based on the conversation that I had, a very short conversation, nothing in detail that, that certainly Ed and I are going to go through.
Yeah.
Was the, um, they have hired two dispatchers since our, two additional dispatchers since our, um, uh, partnership, if you will.
Okay.
And their communications, their union, and this is a, uh, change in working conditions for them as well. So consequently, they're going to be going into negotiations as a result of this, this changeover. So, um, I think some of that is a, part of that expectation of the costs.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm just going to throw it back that it's very interesting to me as the Town Administrator that Westfield could do this for Southwick, which is a bigger community, for $100,000.
I don't, I don't know, you know, again, I don't know what, how they, their cost analysis was. I don't, you know, uh, I don't know how many dispatchers Westfield has on at a time versus what they originally had on and what they needed to add. I don't, that, those are things I don't know.
Yeah, we've tried to compare and found apples and oranges and bananas, and very hard to compare. Thinking outside the box, if contingent upon the approval of the state grant, recognizing that there's a lot of investment in equipment that is hoped for, both departments, would it make sense to front-end load the contract and have declining annual payments to take maximum advantage of the state's support for this activity? I could imagine first year at $500,000, $400,000 in the second, $300,000 in the third, to renew it, too.
With general conversation that I've had with, um, the State 911 Department's rep, Joe, Joseph Kreen, they do, if there is an assessment that's considerably high, they will look at that and recognize that that's, they, they certainly, there is a process to make sure cities and towns don't take advantage of the reimbursement, such as what you, you know. So if they were to say, you know, the assessment fee for Southampton is $500,000, but wages for Southampton was $266,000, you know, in the fiscal year, the state might look at that.
Yeah.
Well, you'd have to build the argument around this much capital investment in the regional infrastructure and that much, $200,000, state, state ongoing.
Yeah, and if the state, I mean, if the state does, you know, if, say it's $200,000 or whatever they get the grant for, I mean, you know, that is a, you know, digressing, you know, proposition, right? It's three years.
It's what number to drop into the application, right?
I'm sorry.
We're trying to help, uh, move the grant application forward with a specific number.
Well, no, I think, well, in a way, I mean, but they're, they're, whatever they want to charge us as our assessment is what they're going to put in the grant application, right?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
So, and, and there must be a maximum in terms of what they can get on, from the state, I would assume.
I suppose it all depends on the size of the REC, right? If the REC is going to be, you know, three or four departments combining, well, then there's going to be, there might be more. But, um, I know that in the conversations I've had, it, there, there, if, if there is an unreasonable assessment, the state will take note of that.
Yeah, they'll kick it out.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, your, your idea of, I know, you guys getting together and kind of taking a look at the communication costs, I think, would be a good start and so that we're at least confident in what, you know, we're, we're asking enough and, you know, it's a reasonable amount, I guess, that, you know, because at, at the end of year five, you know, we're on our own. We're going to have to come up with $200,000 probably, right? Or more. Yeah, so.
There was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think whatever the number is, um, the townspeople, uh, Select Board would like to have some type of justification from East Hampton of that cost. Like, if they can say, well, it's because we're adding two staff members and their salary is X, or we need to get this equipment and the cost is, how do they arrive at whatever number they end up at?
Right, and, and we had an informal conversation about that today, and, and it was what I just described, the two, the two positions that they're adding and probably anticipate adding, uh, more. But, um, it was the two positions added as well as, um, the, uh, negotiations that they're going to be having with their, with their, their union.
And probably in the grant application, I would assume they'd have to delineate the budget a little bit in terms of where they're, why they're asking for that. I mean, most grant programs would ask for how they got to that figure, so, okay. So at this point in time, I mean, you feel like we're getting closer, but.
Yes, I feel, yes, I, when I looked at, at their.
Didn't seem to be too many.
Uh, there was nothing that would, would alarm me whatsoever or any significant changes that I thought were, that would be an impediment. We were like, oh, no, we can't, this, that's, that's too far out.
And they kind of accepted some of the ones that we had put in.
I think they accepted almost everything.
Yeah, I mean, it looked, I didn't, I was looking for a couple in particular and they looked like nothing had been marked out.
No, I, I think everything.
It seemed, seemed to me like in a couple of cases, some of the things that they were adding, but adding back in were clarifying, like in that mediation committee or.
Right.
You know, type of.
Right, may resolve versus will resolve. They, they changed language, which is reasonable language, right? Because that's. But, yeah, I didn't see anything in, in the changes that I, that were any form of a red flag that I was concerned about.
So if these guys, if East Hampton has to apply for this grant by March 1st, you said?
Which, they have to apply for March 1st, but.
We're going to have this in place, because the REC has to exist.
We have to, they have to get recognized as a REC first, so we need to make this a priority, I would say.
Right, so do we need, I mean, when we meet, well, we'll meet again on the 30th, so if we have something in the next couple of weeks, we might possibly be able to take it up?
I, let's, I hope, right, because then we're really kind of, I don't know how fast it takes. I don't know the timeframe for them to be a staff for.
Yeah.
I will tell you this, coincidentally, today, a rep from the State 911 Department stopped at the PD when I was there, and, and he was asked by his, by his, uh, um, boss, if you will, to stop down and see how things were going.
Okay.
And I said, the only thing that's, right now, the, the two municipalities are just reviewing the IMA, and, um, that, that's it. And then once that's signed, he kind of gave, because they wanted to know where we're at with it.
Where we're at, sure, yeah. Right, well, and I would assume, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, there's not some provision, you know, in terms of eligibility or whatever, that they have to be a REC for X number of weeks or something before they can apply.
Not from the conversation that we had in our meetings with the State 911 Department. In fact, they said, really, once the IMAs is, is completed.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't really indicate that it's going to take much to get it established, but that March 1st deadline's.
Sure.
Obviously a major deadline.
Yeah.
Right, and then, but we also want to make sure that we have it established.
Yeah.
They, they get established as a REC. get established as a rec.
So, understanding the broad latitude that we've given the signatories, what are we yet looking for?
I think just to make sure that there's no language that's, I mean, we'd wanted stuff in there about procedures and involving some
None of that was changed.
none of that got changed, so, there's very little, I mean, it sounds like
Like I said, there was nothing in here that I saw was a red flag to
That was my understanding.
Yeah, so I think we're just really just narrowing down a little bit in terms of some communication costs and being able to explain it back to us and say, okay, this is, this is a valid charge.
Without belaboring it, I want to clarify that if it's two hundred thousand annually, fine, um, what I heard was a fairly strong case for some one-time or transitional equipment costs, and I just don't want you to
So the equipment costs
Short yourself.
No, I, what I, you know, the expectation is, when they're a rec, when they do equipment upgrades, we get included as well.
Right.
So when they do communication upgrades, as far as radios, um, that, that occurs with us as well. And what I mean us, it's the fire and police.
I guess, is there a five-year plan for that kind of capital investment that is attachment to this application?
There, there is not, because we have to meet as a group to find, to prioritize our, our needs, right? So, I know, like
Can't do it in ten days.
I wish.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think
That's where we'd like to get to.
Yeah, but I think, I think the goal then is to try and see how far we can get this moving in the next couple of weeks and whatever, whatever needs to happen, so that we can pick it up and, and have it for our meeting on the thirtieth, hopefully, and be ready to
Okay.
Sign off on it.
So, if that was the case, would you give, would the board give, Ed and I, the autonomy to, or, or the three of us, whoever it may be, to, to discuss fees with, with the city?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that was part of the original
It was, okay, it was.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine, I think, yes.
So, so maybe by the thirtieth, we can come up with something
Correct, yeah.
For the board.
No, I think let's, let's aim for that, and, you know, our next meeting after that's not until the thirteenth, but if we needed to do something in between time, we can
Okay.
figure that out, you know, if it falls
I would hope that we'd be signing individually this contract on the
Hopefully on the thirtieth.
Next meeting.
All right, all right, great, all right.
Yeah, we'll be ready if you are.
Okay.
Okay.
And I only
Just read all the fine print and make sure there's no
I, I've read it over twice now.
Sure. It always helps.
Redlining helps.
Very good, all right, thanks, Ian, appreciate it, yep, all right.
Could I ask the select board to consider a little change in the agenda?
Sure.
Would you consider moving the signatures and the PCFs for the town clerk registrars since Lucy's sitting here to the next
Lucy, I didn't realize that's why you were sitting there, my apologies.
Motion or something?
Yeah, if I can, are they in my package, or are they
I move that we rearrange the agenda and move directly to signatures, PCF forms, etc.
Okay. All right, we will do that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Lucy, uh
Hi, Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, these are two more that have, I'm bringing up again, like last meeting, I guess these two slipped through as well, Bradley signed off, I'm bringing these to the PPP meeting next week, I've forwarded all four of them, the two from last time, to the PPP clerk, so she has them in her packet for them to read, um, you know, they were appointed, they have not worked, they just need to be signed off on, so we can get the paperwork to them to be on the payroll.
To get in the payroll.
So this is, in fact, deja vu all over again.
In terms of these people, yeah.
You have four volunteers, we did two last
Well, they haven't worked, so, yeah, yeah.
And two different people this time.
Yeah, we just want to get them on the payroll, so
I move that we approve two PCFs for town clerk registrars, first being Elizabeth Grassley, election worker, part-time, non-benefited, as needed, second Carol LaCass, election worker, part-time, non-benefited, as needed.
Second, all right.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and then, you still end up going to PQP, right, to sign off?
Yes, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, as soon as you
Very good, yeah.
Sign the originals, they'll go
Yeah, with the originals, and I'll throw them out of your door.
Yep.
Right. Okay, okay. Good, thanks, thanks, Lucy, appreciate that.
Lucy.
Yep, thanks, Ed.
What's that?
Don't think we have anything now, just some basic signatures.
Thank you for asking.
Yep, okay, we're good. Okay, next up, uh, excess equipment, I think we started something going here, we got surplus equipment coming out of our ears that hasn't been dealt with in twenty years, I'm sure, so
Have to have yard sale.
This time, we have a little bit of surplus equipment from the COA.
Yes, we do.
All right, so we have an email in here, um, for some electronics, keyboards and phones and a printer-copier, all right, so that's all what we need to do, is just give the authorization to declare it surplus property, is that the motion we need?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, authorization to surplus property for the items from the council on aging, listed in the email that was provided.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
All right, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and hopefully we'll take care of just about everybody, we've got the library and we've got everybody else.
Actually, the library's reached out again.
Uh-oh, well, anyway, we, we've definitely made headway on that, so it's, the challenge now is to get it up on the crazy state auction website, that's another, another challenge, okay. Next up, and this one may take a minute or two, uh, town-owned building valuations, so we have in our packages, um, some updates from Mia, Maya?
Maya, yeah.
Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association.
Right, and, so we have some valuations on our various properties, the town hall, the fire station, the old town hall, i.e. police station, and the library in particular, and looks like we've got a bit of an increase on each one of those, so Ed, want to just tell us what we do here?
And what they do is, they kind of split it up, uh, and they don't do them all in one year, uh, they did review the Norris School again, uh, but they had reviewed the Norris School and that value had increased back in, I think it was, uh, 2020, um, so, this year, um, the, uh, Larrabee Town Hall slash Senior Center, uh, the current value that we were insured for was two million, twelve thousand, twenty-one dollars, the updated value is three million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, so that one's almost doubled, uh, and it's increased, uh, one million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The fire station, uh, next door, um, who, the value on it was seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, the updated value is nine hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred dollars, um, that's a difference of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. The old town hall, um, the police station, whichever you prefer to call it, um, the current value is six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, the updated value is four million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars, so that's a difference of three million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars, that's the biggest change here. The Edwards Library, the current value is one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, the updated value is one million, six hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, the difference is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, so, uh, in, in total for those four buildings, uh, what they were valued at was four million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, that's going up to ten million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred dollars, um, so that's an increase of five million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars in value, what does that translate to us as far as additional costs for the year, um, the total additional premium is five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Now, first of all, which, which insurance line is this under in our
This is, this is the general insurance.
General insurance, is it under the, under general fund, or is that?
It's under general fund, it's towards, towards the, the end, I think it's under miscellaneous.
So we're, we're right now, we're budgeted for a hundred and thirteen thousand, so that's not about right?
Right.
For, for that, so this is an, an additional five thousand, fifty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and my, my memory is, I think there's four thousand and something left in that account.
Hang on, hang on, I just had it in my hand here, two seconds, uh, no, um, from, well, from twenty-three, so I'm, I'm looking
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at last year, so, um, there was only a hundred and fifty bucks left from last year, um.
Why are the building costs not apportioned by department? The library is the library. The old town hall is police, and I don't know, I've never visited.
Visited, yeah.
This building, obviously, is general.
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna, I'm just going to throw it back, so why isn't workers' compensation allocated by department? Why isn't health insurance allocated by department?
It's probably just easier in the long run to aggregate it under the overall general
Right, exactly, exactly, instead of paying it out of then ten different accounts and getting the bill at pieces.
Four different sources on it.
Well, okay, let, let me come at it a different way, what, what really motivated me is, uh, what is the logic behind the increased valuation on the old town hall? And it's not that I want to tuck it to any one department or another, I really don't understand that, and I can imagine, if we go forward with the public safety building, that that might one day join the list of surplus properties.
Let me ask you this.
Heresy, I know.
And we all hope nothing happens, okay? We all hope nothing happens. There's a fire tomorrow, a tornado comes through, that building is damaged, is five thousand dollars in allocation for the increases for these buildings, to have them insured worth it, versus looking at not having that insured and all of a sudden, on that building, not having enough to repair it and having to go to the taxpayers and say, we need three million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and two
Thank you, I, I don't want to nickel and dime this, but I am really curious if, you know, you want to do sort of cost-based accounting, it looks like some of our, our buildings are not all created equal, and if over, you know, whatever long planning horizon we have, we have options, and knowing which ones are more expensive to insure is a long-term issue.
Yeah.
And thank you for bringing this back to today's issue, of course, we renew the insurance as we've been insured with the new appraisal.
Yeah, I mean, until we get a new safety complex, obviously, the police are going to stay there, we have no
No, no, for, for now, absolutely.
Yeah, for no choice, after that, there'll be a set of other
Being able to compare
Yeah.
apples, oranges, bananas, again.
And, and we, and we can do a lot of different things, but just take a look at what the building costs have done in the last three years, okay?
Construction costs.
Huh?
Construction costs, yeah.
Well, whether it's construction, which is also repair, uh, you know, refurbished, what have you, but that is one of the biggest pieces of why all of a sudden a replacement cost on a facility or building is now much more expensive than it was even two or three years ago.
Is it, does, I'm sorry, designated historic, are we creating high bar for ourselves?
It is a historic, there, that one is particularly on the historic register, I believe.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, no, that doesn't really cost us any more valuation or insurance-wise or, you know, what have you, now, the town could, you know, what, one of the other options is, yeah, you can farm it out, see if you can get a cheaper price or what have you, the other thing the town could do, but we really don't, shall we say, have the money to put away to do this, is you can start putting, doing
Self-insure.
Self-insurance, exactly, yeah.
Now, to the extent, I, I don't know that I, I hope this isn't totally true, but does this take into consideration, or does the valuation happen because it was just time to do it, right? It's not because we were doing repairs and
No, they, they, they saw you and Christina out there
Washing windows at town hall and, you know, painting doors.
Actually, actually, this valuation was done back in the late spring, uh, before any of those were done, so, yeah.
Great, okay, all right, so, yeah, I was afraid, like, oh, great, we just put out this money to get, you know, things redone, and now this is what it's costing us, but okay.
No, this, this was done before those repairs were made.
Okay, so we basically, guys, have got a fifty-two hundred dollar bill, fifty-two sixty-five, in addition
Yep.
to what, uh, is already budgeted, so it'll be something we'll have to take into consideration as we move forward with our new budget going forward.
Correct.
But, yeah, okay, so, could I have a motion on this one, please, to approve the additional premium, and renewal and additional premium as, as outlined here?
Oh, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, renew with the additional pre, premium as, as outlined here.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all right, no further
We're renewing the MIA insurance policy, and the premium has gone up as noted.
Right.
Second.
Basically for the current town hall, the old town hall, fire station, and Edwards Library, okay. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye, yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for that.
I'll get this back to
Well, thanks for the explanation on that, too, it was like, I was surprised to see the, the value, I mean, the, the premium hasn't, doesn't seem like much, but the, the valuation is quite, quite different.
I mean, yeah, and when the school had, I would say, gone up considerably back in 2020 when, uh, that one was done, uh, I was surprised at the change in value on the old town hall, yep, I, I will say percentage, percentage-wise, uh, you know
Sure.
myself, but
It could be the case that the replacement cost is different from the market value of that building.
Oh, and, oh, yeah, and that's true a lot, a lot of times with, you know, a, a lot of
Older buildings.
Yeah, of older buildings, no, no doubt, no doubt about that, you're absolutely right.
Lest anyone get too excited, I wasn't going to
Yeah.
add that to the property list yet.
Yeah, okay.
No, and, and, and that's why in a lot of cases, sometimes you will see with a facility that, you know, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years old, and that's young compared to, you know, that one, it'll get, you know, whether it happens to be, you know, a, a, a school or a DPW facility or, or whatever, it gets to the point where it's like, okay, uh, now we're looking at a public face, safety facility for some different, you know, reasons of, you know, code and space and everything else, but a piece of the puzzle that falls back into that is, well, jeez, if we had to bring that building up to today's codes to meet it, and you start looking at
Sure.
well, jeez, it's going to cost us, you know, fifteen million dollars to do that, and it's going to cost us the, just about the same price to build a entirely new, energy-efficient, you know, facility, let's go with, you know, with the new energy-efficient facility, because, yeah, that cost of remodeling, replacement
Yeah.
repair from damage
Right.
is, is just so much more than building from new.
Yep.
We'll make sure to hold up energy efficiency as criteria on these building committees, I was noticing that it's, it's on there, but it's not high enough.
Okay, moving on, uh, TA search update, uh, I think anybody who might have watched, uh, we did town administrator interviews on Saturday, thanks to the select board members for being here to go through that process, we had two very, very good candidates, I think, very strong, very, very strong in different ways, um, and we did make a selection for Scott Zabeck, uh, who comes right now from Palmer, living in Palmer, I believe, and, uh, most recently, he's, he's working in Lawrence, Mass, and, uh, we will actually be seeing him in a bit to start talking about some contract terms, but he, uh, was offered the job and has accepted, so we are hopeful to come to negotiations, uh, at least get into them later this evening, so, with that, um, you know, we're, we will aim for an overlap, to be determined, but I would say no more than two weeks at the maximum, um, so we will see how that plays in our negotiations, okay?
Okay.
Collins Center compensation study and update. Ed, you've got some news on this, I hear.
Yeah, I actually had a meeting with our representative from the Collins Center this afternoon. Went over the list of positions that they are doing. I had noticed that a couple that we had asked for weren't on the list, so we went, we went through that to make sure it was complete. They are working at finalizing the actual job descriptions in written form. She believed that all the data was back on the, shall we say, compensation side of things for the study. So Lindsay and I will exchange some emails on those positions that, to this point in time, hadn't been done for one reason or the other. But our expectations are that they've got 98% of the data. They will finish the job descriptions, finalize those over the next two weeks, and then they will send those to me. I will send those to the pertinent department heads, and from there, what it is, is those pertinent department heads are to distribute them to the appropriate employee who has a week to go over them and make any suggestions or ask for any changes on them and give it back to that department head. That department head will then have a week on their own to go over those, their employees' job descriptions, and then, once they've done that and they've made any suggestions, edits, what have you to it, they will send those back to me and I will send them back to Collins Center to finalize the report.
So all in all, we're still talking a good three weeks out, probably?
Probably, yeah. But we'll still have it back in time for the budget season.
Okay. All right. So in general, they have looked at the positions we have and have worked at classifying who fits in what grouping or whatever kind of thing, right?
Right, in general, yeah.
Hopefully, and looking at compensation options and the ranges of, ranges of compensation for comparable positions, hopefully that will give us a good starting point and figure out, you know, how far we are along that spectrum or?
Or are we way off, you know?
Are we way off on one end, which I highly doubt, or are we way, way under on one end? And if so, what's the challenge and how do we start moving?
And then it'll be up to the select board to figure out, okay, maybe we can't, you know, bite it all off in one, you know, fiscal year or so, you know. Can, you know, can we get, does that mean we have, is it two years or three years before you get everybody to exactly where they should be in that range, so?
Well, and I am glad that we started this process. I mean, in spite of all of the ups and downs with this, we actually did kind of start this when Rini was chair and one of those, probably what, three years ago now, I'd say?
Probably.
About that, where we started looking at, you know, let's take the lowest paid ones and see if we can't get them where they need to be and tried to start the process. So it wasn't perfect, but at least it got the ball rolling and so.
No, and that first year, depending on how far off of where, at least on the Jacob Study, individuals were, there was a conscientious effort to move, you know, especially at the administrative assistant level, the lower levels of people, and this isn't across the board, but up to, the cap was put at 12% of, somebody could move, you know, move as much as that, but due to the budgetary constraints, if somebody was off more than that, it was recognized that, okay, we're probably gonna have to do something in the future, but we can't
Can't do it all.
Move any further than that at this point in time.
Good. Well, looking forward to getting this and hopefully we will have a useful tool. Okay. Couple more things on new business here. FY '22 audit, and this was the federal audit of the ARPA, I believe, was that? Or both?
That's both. That's both. And yes, there's just a couple of things left and it is on the federal audit side, and I will take care of that in the next week and get that back to. I still call them Melanson rather than Markham, but get that back to them so that they can finish up the '22 audit.
Okay. And so at some point, probably again mid, we'd have a draft report and they'd come in and talk to us?
They do a draft report. We have the opportunity to respond to any comments they might have on the management side of things. They would take our responses and then deliver a final report and then they would come in and report, give a presentation to the select board.
Okay, sounds good. All right, and then FY '23, I'm sorry.
Well, I understand there was something in particular that required the federal level audit. I imagine we have an audit every year. Is it typical that we're 18 months and change beyond the end of a fiscal year before the audit is complete? Right, fiscal '22.
No, no, and in general, and I'll just say, I'll just use fiscal year '23 as an example. Usually, we'd have the auditors in here probably around January or February and have that report back probably March, April.
And so?
So it's probably about nine months. Probably about nine months.
And that implies getting going right now on the '23 audit.
What's that?
'23, once we get this closed out. That's the next topic.
Right, once we get it closed out, right.
Closing out the books for '23.
They can't do things concurrently.
No.
No. Yeah. So the federal audit was new for us this year because we had so much in grant money. We had over $750,000.
We spent $750,000. And once you hit that $750,000 level, it's required to have that federal single audit portion added to your normal yearly annual audit.
Having gone through that, are we more efficient now doing an ordinary audit year?
Don't know if we know yet until we see the report.
Yeah.
Right, clearly, okay.
Don't know until we see their comments and what they found, right?
Pedal to the metal.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, so FY '23 closeout update. Where are we with that? I saw some reports from Bradley today.
Yeah, and I checked, I asked Bradley about that and he's, he still has some, he and Jen have some reconciliations to complete and he has, still has the reconciliations to do with the school to be able to close out fiscal year '23.
Okay. Hoping by what, end of the month? Is that realistic? I mean, what have we got to get done? Have we got to get them?
I would think on our side, I'm a little worried about that reconciliation with the school side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay. All righty, well, they'll have to keep plugging away at it and if we need, like I say, we'll, I don't know, they've got to talk to the central office people, I guess, and help, help make it happen, huh?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other business that can't wait until our January 30th regular meeting? Hearing none, we'll keep on moving. Anything on old business yet? I don't think there's any updates that I'm aware of on the Stormwater Utility or cannabis. Stephen, you said you were gonna meet and it's on the agenda for Board of Health, just talking about possible uses.
Yep, February 27th, and that would be beginning at 5:00, immediately prior to the Board of Selectment.
Yeah, okay.
Select Board.
Right, okay, very good. Okay, and then I think the one thing that we are still looking for, Ed, is this the follow-up through with KP Law?
Yes, I did send Brian an email asking for an update on that.
All right, very good. Okay, we have already done our personal change forms. We have one license and permit. Stephen, you want to pick that up or read it out?
Sure. I move that we grant to the friends of the Edwards Library a one-day beer and wine license for the library property on February 12th, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Second. All right. So this looks like it's their usual, I think it's their wine and sip party, wine and something party?
Sounds like the place to be, yeah.
Sounds like it, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, Joanna Douglas, the library director, was fighting everyone to come up and participate today at the department meeting.
Yeah, it's a fundraiser for them, so that's on February 2nd from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
5:00 to 7:00.
Yep, so we have a motion, Stephen?
I second.
Dan, second, okay. No discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, we don't have any warrants tonight. Stephen, you had no warrants to sign. What do you know? Not till next meeting. We have one document to sign, the EMEA contract?
I have not finished retyping the portions of it that have, so I'll have to wait for the next meeting.
All right, that sounds fine. And then, other than that, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Thanks. September 27, October 10, October 24. Anybody have any comments on any of these? I have one on the September meeting, but other than that?
You've reviewed all three?
I've kind of gone through them in my, my own way, yes. So for me, on September 27th meeting, there was one thing, just under the adjournment, this is the, actually the video meeting we had with Bernie to talk about what we wanted for the town administrator qualities, et cetera. Just the, we ended up adjourning. That was the one where Dan made the motion, Stephen, we were having trouble getting you unmuted, I think, and then Joy and John disappeared at the end. So we didn't, we didn't actually have a vote. We just adjourned. So the sentence in there, the motion passed 4 to 0. We didn't really take a motion to, we just, I declared as adjourned.
Yeah, we'll probably just change that to the chair declared being adjourned at 7:40.
So that was the only thing I noticed, that, yeah. We didn't actually take a formal vote because we couldn't hear one and two, we lost on the Zoom link, I think, or something they left.
Yeah, I never, I never saw a group of people abandon you and I so fast.
Very good.
You're nonetheless confident that I seconded the motion?
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, I think you had a raised hand. We couldn't hear you, but you raised your hand.
I believe that's correct. I believe that's exactly right.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you, but we saw you, yeah.
Okay, then.
All right. All right, and then anything on October 10 or October 24? I don't think I saw anything. These are very detailed minutes.
Joy was present through all of these, right?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, she was at some point. I don't think I noticed anything. Dan, did you see anything offhand?
Did.
The one, John was absent for the 24th, so that's noted. I think we're good. All right, we have a motion to approve these two then, please.
Yeah, I move that we approve the select board minutes for three dates. September 27, October 10, and October 24 in 2023. Disregard the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all right. Motion by Stephen, second by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, on the agenda, right. It's 2023, not 24, correct. Thank you for that. Didn't even notice that. Okay. Any updates on pending items, Ed? East Street tip proposal or did you already sign that?
No, I have not, sorry.
East Street tip proposal, anything happening on that? Nothing more at this point in time?
Actually, the select board had approved my signing that probably a couple of meetings ago, so that's been done. Probably should change that pending items to East Street Section, VHB, tip project.
Project rather than, yeah, okay. All right, and Green Community Grant. This is one I really want to see us get done here.
I will try to close that up next week.
Is there anything, is there anything at DOR? I mean, I don't know, is there, is there something we have our, you know, we can make use of our local senator if he could be of any help? Is there a nudge that could happen or?
No, I'll reach, I'll reach back out to our new Green Community Representative next week.
Yeah, because I was gonna reach out to Senator Villas anyway and probably repese on the, to get a letter of recommendation on the Mass Trails grant application. So I thought I'd throw that in there if that could be of any help to have them just do a nudge to move that along, but we definitely.
No, we should be good.
Yeah, get those projects. So hopefully by the 30th, we'll have some news on those guys. And then Bradley's still looking at his assistant accountant recruiting, hopefully?
Yes, I think actually, once we get the Collins Study back, we'll be able to.
We'll be ready to move better on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Bradley was working on training towards one of his.
Yes, procurement.
MPO.
He's, yes, this week was his first class in what I will call the MAPO program to reach his certification as a certified procurement officer. So it takes three separate courses to be taken and passed. And once he's gotten to that level, he will submit his paperwork and a check to the state for his certification and then he will bring that back to us. I will, I will remind the select board that, because he will finish his third class after I am gone, that the actual motion was in place of having the town administrator be the CPO, of having the town accountant be that CPO to add that duty to his contract and to adjust his salary accordingly, accordingly at that time.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Good. So for our calendar, we have our next select board meetings on the 23rd, the joint meeting I mentioned, and the 30th is our regular scheduled meeting. And other than that?
I forgot two things in my report. It's been such a crazy day.
Yes.
One, I will let the select board know that as per his personal services agreement, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, did reach out and send us a letter that it was six months before his contract renewed and he is looking to renegotiate that contract. And also, I will let you know that we have received notification from the Local 98 Highway Engineers Union that it's six months till their contract CBA expires and they are looking to renegotiate that contract.
Okay. Good to know. Thanks for remembering those. Yep, we'll have those on our tickler list here, too. Okay. All right, so with that, we will be going into executive session and oddly enough, we've got through our entire agenda tonight. So thanks, guys, for being efficient. I must say, if the school folks had shown up, we probably would not have gotten through, so we'd have to go out and come in, but I'm gonna recommend that we just adjourn and go into executive session. And the reasons for executive session?
And we won't be returning to open session.
I would rather not return to open session. We won't need to. So we are going into executive session in a moment and the reasons for this will be per MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, and MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Executive session minutes, May 23, June 20, July 11, August 29, September 12, November 7, November 21, and December 19. So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn and move into executive session?
I move that we adjourn the public session and go into executive session at 7:30 p.m.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Levani, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All's aye, okay. We are adjourned at 7:30 and we will not be coming back into public session. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.